Gentlemen, welcome to Midwest City Council Meeting, September 8th version. I appreciate you being here. I know why most of you are here. But anyway, I call this meeting to order. I would ask that Mr. Sullivan come down and offer the invocation, and Sean Reed will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. You blessed us with, Lord, and the occasion of this meeting. Father, we thank you for these men and women who've served this council and served this city in this capacity, and, Lord, I ask tonight that your wisdom and discernment be upon them. Father, we thank you so much for this great city that we enjoy and this state and this nation. Father, we thank you for the men and women who protect us, not only locally, but all over the world. Father, we ask that your protection and your peace be upon them. Father, we thank you so much for your Son, Jesus, the blessing of the forgiveness from sin that we have through the blood that was shed on that cruel cross. We thank you again, Jesus, for being willing to go, and God for being one to give up your Son. We ask these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be seated. We'll go around horseshoe. Is there any community-related announcements? Mr. Lyon, I guess you're on deck.
I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who came out to the 5K-9 race, participated, donated, organized, particularly Joyce George for orchestrating that event that was very successful. And the mayor and I are trying to figure out exactly how much it was raised, but definitely over $12,000 to get a new K-9 officer for the police department, and we're very thankful for all that support by our community. And we got to meet some fun people out in the park, just handing out water and bananas. The water was donated by Crest, and the bananas were donated by Buddy's Produce. And so every random person who was walking regional park that day got a chance to have a water and a banana, so just add to the enjoyment. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Eads. Anybody else? Mr. Lyon, you're on deck.
Okay. Announcements for September 8th, 2020. So Saturday, September 12th, this Saturday is the Annual Fishing Clinic sponsored by the Midwest City Kiwanis Club. It is from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Joby Barnes Regional Park. Saturday, September 19th is the next Cruisin' for Coffee at the Santa Fe Steakhouse at 7101 Southeast 29th. Free admission. Come check out the classic cars and new cars from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Saturday, September 26th is Rockin' Regional. Rockin' Regional is a live adult classic hits in Joby Barnes Park from 3:30 in the afternoon until 10:00 p.m. at night. The Wise Guys will take the stage at 3:00 p.m., followed by Super Freak at 7:00 p.m. It's a large park. There's plenty of room to socially distance, so bring your families and your lawn chairs and your picnic lunch and dinner and enjoy some great live music in Midwest City. All of our calendar events can be found on our website at www.midwestcityok.org, so please check that out, and you can follow us there for events. And let's see, two more. September is National Preparedness Month, and we have information from our Emergency Management Department on our website under Emergency Management. Debbie Wagner is our Emergency Operations Director for Midwest City, and if you have any questions, please contact her. And my last, excuse me, item that I have is fresh off the press. Late this afternoon, we received our sales tax check for the month of September. Once again, our city is blessed to have another outstanding sales tax month. This will end our first quarter, so three months in a row in this fiscal year, beginning July 1. So this month, year over year, we're up 15.12%, which is about 528,000. We're up on use tax 83%. That's use taxes, taxes that come from buying things over the Internet. So thank you, Midwest City residents, for shopping local, shopping here in Midwest City. It's what supports your police and fire and your city operations, so thank you. And so for year over year, let me just go real quickly, our sales and use tax versus previous year, 15.16, and for the year now, we are up 16.37% or 1.7 million versus our projection. As you all know, we had about a 5% projection that was year over year less than the previous year, just because we weren't sure what COVID, what impact COVID would have on us. So at this point in the fiscal year, and this is what we budgeted our numbers off of for all the department heads and the departments in the city, we are for the year, for the month, we're 30% over projection, and for the year, we're 32.25% over projection, which is right at $3 million. So very good report for our city. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. That is good news for our city, and again, thank you. Yes, sir.
I know Labor Day was Monday, but for those that were on the Monday route, please do not forget to put your trash cans and recycle bins out. If you're being picked up on Monday, put them out tomorrow before 7:00 a.m., or they will not be picked up. They got missed in the notes. I had a chance to talk to Jill. So just so everybody's aware, if you are on Monday's route, make sure you get your trash and recycling out. It won't get picked up. And picnic with protectors on September 17th from 4:30 to 6:00 at Regional Park.
Yes, thank you.
And Public Works employees. Endings is concluded.
Right before council meeting, we had an opportunity, if you haven't been by Woodside and Reno lately, we had an opportunity to sign some steel, so to speak. Because of COVID, we couldn't have a groundbreaking ceremony, but our animal control facility is going up nicely. You can start to see steel going up. It's starting to take shape, and this will be one of the first projects that's completed under the General Obligation Bond of 2018. So we're excited about it, and it's really taking shape, and it's really going to be a nice facility, and it's going to send quite a statement for our community. So thanks for all those who've been involved in that. Tonight is kind of bittersweet for me, because there's two ladies that are stepping aside and going somewhere else that I've been involved with for, I gotta be careful how I say that right, for about 20, 20-plus years. And so with that being said, Ms. Yolanda, can you meet me down front? I just hope and pray that Edmund knows what they're getting, because we're losing a great person. And I just personally, I want to thank you for your service and your friendship over the years. Yolanda's been with the city for quite a while. She's our current court clerk.
My goodness.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
My good sir.
She's acted, she's been in the juvenile division and in court clerk, and she's just been a tremendous employee for the city of Midwest City. And she is moving on and going to Edmund. Okay, I'll leave you alone. So whereas Ms. Yolanda Whitlow began her career with the city of Midwest City in February 2002 with juvenile court compliance coordinator, and is leaving September 20, or September 2020 as the court clerk. And whereas Yolanda is well-known for compassionate, positive, enthusiastic spirit that facilitates a healthy work, a productive relationship with her employees and business colleagues, as she always steps up to help in any situation without having to be asked. Whereas over the years, Yolanda has been vital in the overall ever-developing, improving of the juvenile department, leading and supervising new programs, and offering counseling and mentoring and educational services to troubled youth and their guardians. Whereas Yolanda not only gives of herself for the city of Midwest City, but also serves the Oklahoma Municipal Court Clerks Association Board as District 2A representative, and directs contact with all 2A, District 2A court clerks, fielding calls, emails regarding laws, duties, procedures for a court clerk, and so on. So therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2020, as Yolanda Whitlow Day in the city of Midwest City, and do hereby urge all citizens of Midwest City to show Yolanda the appreciation and compassion that she deserves for her leadership and contributions to the city of Midwest City. Yeah, let's. Facebook moment. Good luck. Holler if you ever need anything.
Thank you.
Your family come up?
There's no for real, but still.
Thank you guys for being here.
I sure would.
Vaughn, Paul. Y'all didn't present that. I just wanted to say. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Gracie Sullivan. When I was a police lieutenant, she had my number on speed dial. And I always knew it was Gracie, because I just, Lieutenant Dukes, this is Gracie Sullivan of Oakwood. She has been a volunteer for this city for, I don't know how many years, how many years?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, somewhere. And not only that, she was the Neighborhood Watch President of Oakwood East, and she ruled Oakwood East.
That's her part.
But she's stepping down from all boards, although it's a sad day for the city of Midwest City, but you deserve some rest, Gracie.
Thank you.
And I can't thank you for all, enough for all that you've done for this city and your community. And I wish we could clone you, because we need more like you. And with that being said, I'm gonna let these other gentlemen speak, and they've got a, they've got a presentation.
So Gracie informed us that she was, is this on? Okay. Gracie informed us this year that she was retiring from the Tree Board, and I'll just tell you that a year ago, I was a little bit new to it. I was the rookie, in fact. And so I came to the Tree Board after Vaughn had handed me, handed the reins over, and I came there, and I'll tell you, I got treated like family. It was an amazing experience. And you, well, I do feed them. You're right, sir. I do feed them. But they treated me like family, and Gracie, you have been an incredible example, not only to your other, the citizens of Midwest City, but employees to kind of see that there are dedicated people that live here that are invested in the community. You've done so much for us, and I'm grateful to have gotten to know you. Thank you so much. So on behalf of the Tree Board and the city of Midwest City, we present you with this plaque dedicated to all the many years of service to the Tree Board.
Okay.
Now, I've got to hand it over to the big guy. The Vaughnster has known you too long not to say a few words, so.
Gracie, you and I have worked together for almost 20 years on the Tree Board. Ladies and gentlemen, you look around this city, and you see some of the beautiful, beautifully landscaped islands and parks and trails, and this lady was a part of that on the Tree Board and had a lot, brought a lot of vision, and you've chaired the Tree Board now probably for six or seven years at least. Anyway, we love you. We appreciate you. Thank you for all the years of friendship, all the fun times we had going to Tree Board activities and different things like that. So thank you so much for your friendship and your service to this city.
Thank you.
Yeah, surely. I bet she does.
I bet she does.
Well, thank you. This is an honor. I appreciate all the kind words and the plaque and my friends being here, and it was great. A lot of it was, like Vaughn said, we did a lot of interesting things. We learned a lot. Tree City USA, important things for the neighborhoods. So I appreciate this, and you're all very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Gracie. Holler if you need anything. And who do we have to blame for that?
I know, but I'm not saying it.
In police work, that's what we call a clue.
You have to like, get the mayor's phone taken away by his wife.
Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair entertains a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Move into discussion items of the agenda. Mr. Lyon, discussion item number one.
Public hearing with discussion and consideration of an appeal filed by the owner of the property located at 717 South Midwest Boulevard for the notice in order to abate tall grass and weeds. Mr. Stroh.
As you all saw in the memo, it's a kind of a odd appeal. The gentleman is not appealing the notice itself, but what he's appealing is the summarily abatement clause, which Midwest City adopts exactly as the state statute has it. So I don't believe he's here, and I don't believe you could actually honor the appeal without editing the code to be off of state statute. So I will leave it with that.
I went by and looked at the property. Just out of curiosity, it's not that big of a lot. I mean, it's a small residential lot.
It is, and the company, the gentleman that filed the appeal was representing the company, and as he stated in his appeal, it is not one that we get a lot of code complaints on at all. I think he has three since they've owned the property, which is not very many. But again, it's a statutory issue.
If it's state statute, even though he's not here, we shouldn't continue this, because we can't weigh in on this, really.
So I think we need a motion.
A motion to what? Approve this?
Well, I would think the more appropriate action would be take no action at all.
I don't know, Heather. What do you think? Should we take action and deny, or should we take?
Because if we take no action, it can come back to us in any way, shape, or form. But if we deny, this is done. He had the opportunity to show up. He is appealing this based on something that we don't have any say over. This is a state statute, so we should deny it.
Exactly. Counselor, I'm going to ease.
I have a motion and a second. The motion is to dismiss. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Presentation by Heckenkamper Golf Course Design from Tulsa, Oklahoma, on the development and design phase of the John Conrad Regional Golf Course.
Mayor and council, tonight you have with PDG and with Heckenkamper Golf Course Design, Mr. Connor Cummings. Connor has been a project manager for multiple projects for Heckenkamper Golf Design and PDG. He has a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from the University of Arkansas and a master's degree from the University of Oklahoma. Excuse me, got choked there. Second. Connor is a very talented young man. I've driven the entire golf course with him, and he has spent many, many hours trudging over this entire golf course since earlier in this year. And I think what you're going to see tonight, you'll be very pleased with. I am very impressed with his work and his vision. Connor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Vaughn. So we are completing the preliminary design phase of the golf course renovation. So to get everyone up to speed with where we stand on the project right now, the golf course is a 50-year-old facility. It's got some aging infrastructure, and as that continues to break down, the golf course is becoming increasingly difficult to maintain. As far as a, from the strategic point of view for golf course architects, it's not an overly difficult golf course, but it is overly challenging for beginners. It makes it a tough place to play if you're not initiated into the golf realm. As you can see, the sand bunker on the left has grass growing in it. That's a dilapidated bunker. It's outlived its life cycle, and there's also some drainage problems across the property that we seek to address in the renovation. The picture on the left is the existing pump station for the irrigation system. That's the original pump station from 50 years ago. The irrigation system is the lifeline of the golf course, and as that breaks down, the maintenance workers, that's the irrigation leak on the right, and the maintenance staff is spending more time fixing things that are breaking down instead of spending time on making things better. So that might be overly critical for the golf course, but this was a picture I took in March, and that's a full parking lot. So there is a need for the golf course. The community supports it, and council should be congratulated on continuing to support it with this much-needed renovation. So as part of our design, we're going to update that infrastructure, the greens, the bunkers, the tees, all-new irrigation system, drainage, and then we're going to renovate the driving range in what we're calling a short game area, which is designed to attract new players, beginners, people that otherwise wouldn't come to the golf course, might, after this renovation. So with the new greens and bunkers, we're not starting from scratch at John Conrad, but it's going to feel like a completely redesigned course. So this is just the overall course routing. This is kind of where we start. We're moving a couple of the holes around. We're adding additional sets of tee boxes so that beginners don't have to play from the same place that experts have to play from. And then we're moving the short game area right outside the clubhouse, which we can show on a subsequent slide. So the driving range, we're expanding the driving range tee. We're doubling it so that twice as many players can participate at one time. That will help spread out divot recovery. We're also adding synthetic turf mats at the back that you can use on a rainy day when the range would otherwise be closed. We're also expanding the back of the range, 40 yards. And we're doing that because people are hitting the golf ball further these days, and there's some safety issues at the back of the range now, so we're doing our best to eliminate that. We're also incorporating some target mounds, some target poles in the middle of the range, to kind of spruce the area up to bring more people out to John Conrad. The image on the right, if you can go back one, sorry, was, this is what we're calling the short game area. So this is right outside the clubhouse, and it's, we've got a few practice greens and bunkers for people to practice when they're not playing. This area can also double as a three-hole short course. That means that this is a good place for people that aren't ready to go play the actual big course to start learning the game of golf. Right next to this area, we have an event lawn planned, so that is a turf area that's going to be maintained at golf course quality, that can be used for non-golf events, such as weddings, different banquets, outside events, what have you. Why we like it in this position is because it's right next to that short game area, that short course, where somebody that comes out to the golf course for something like a wedding might be tempted to go over and pick up a golf club when they see people having fun at the short game area. That's just part of being a more inclusive community asset that the golf course is now. Next slide. So as part of our phase of the project, we are renovating the golf course entirely up to the clubhouse. Everything that we do in our scope of work is, will be set up if there is a clubhouse renovation in the future. So Vaughn asked us to prepare a clubhouse master plan, which will be done in a subsequent phase, hopefully. So we analyzed the clubhouse for how the space was being used, how people were getting around it, views, how it was working overall. Next slide. And we came up with some different clubhouse concepts, completely preliminary in nature, but reorganized the space a little bit to make it more inviting of a place, so that people from the parking lot could see golf being played, giving it a real, a strong front door feature, and moving some back-of-the-house stuff to where it needed to be instead of right in the customers' eye. Next slide. So these are just some of the renderings that we compiled that might be done in a future phase. There we've got increased cart staging, and that's another outdoor lawn area that could be used for, like I said, non-golf activities and bringing non-golf programming to the golf course to incorporate some of those. So when we were thinking about those, to the next slide, we started thinking about some of the events that could be held at the golf course, those non-golf stuff, so weddings, food truck events, movie night on the lawn. We have a beautiful, big driving range tee out there. Would be a perfect place for a movie night on the lawn. I guess that is it. But so in summation, our clubhouse master plan, which might not be done in this phase, we're kind of teeing it up, so to speak, to use a golf term, to renovate the course entirely, but stop where we can tie in to any clubhouse improvements that might be done in a subsequent phase.
I want to make a couple of comments for the people that don't, haven't been out to John Conrad. It's always rated as one of the top public golf courses in central Oklahoma. If they, you know, they do that deal where people can participate, and John Conrad is always in the top five. There's been several years it's been in the top three. What he's got planned here, we'll put it at the top, because for, on the driving range, I don't know if you noticed it or not, and I told Vaughn I thought that this was probably a test of me to see if I actually looked at the stuff. He's got a practice area for junior golf on the driving range. I don't think there's anyplace else in Oklahoma around here that has that. Where, basically, if I'm looking at it, you can shut the golf, you can shut the driving range down and have the young kids go out there and play golf on the driving range, which is unique. I don't think I've ever I don't think I've ever seen, I know what a 19th hole used to be, but I've never seen a 19th hole labeled like you do, which is, it's an extra hole for the people to settle their disagreements on after they get done playing 18 holes. And this will be, this will be state-of-the-art. I mean, there's nothing in central Oklahoma. I mean, you know.
Absolutely. No, no. It would be truly unique to the state of Oklahoma and absolutely flexible with what you're saying, like shutting the range down to have a junior course. No one else has that around here, and that's something that, for the city of Midwest City to be able to offer, citizens is pretty special.
So when you do a complete golf course renovation like this, how much on average over the next couple of years do rounds increase?
It's kind of a moving target. Of course, we like to see an increase in rounds. Just, for example, since COVID hit, I know that golf courses around the state are doing much more rounds than previous. So ideally, we'd like to see an uptick of, depending on the facility, for John Conrad, I estimate 20%, but, you know, things happen, COVID happens.
And can you make sure we get a pump that will last for 50 years?
Yeah, well, I'm surprised that that one is still working, so.
It's lasted that long because of the employees that are over there, because they've had some, and I'm not speaking from experience, but I have been there. They've got some really quality people over there that have kept that thing together. What, and I've asked Vaughn on this, what's the timeline on shutting it down and reopening it?
We will begin construction in February or March of next year. We'll close the golf course down entirely. We'll have about eight months of construction. We'll plant the grass on the greens, which is the stuff that takes the longest time to grow in. So we'll plant the greens in September of next year and let that grass grow in until the following early summer. So we'll open back for play in late spring, early summer of 2022.
Okay, here's the hot question, and I've asked this Vaughn and Tim. What about the driving range? Is there any hope of getting, and I know it's construction, but is there any hope of getting that open any time sooner than the golf course? Because we have a significant amount of kids that play golf, high school golf. Midwest City, Carl Albert has it. And they have a place where they can, they can go over to hit our nine-hole course and play, but there really isn't any place for them to hit golf.
You know, I don't see that being something we could manage to do because there's not any greens on the actual driving range, so that, that grass will grow in quicker. The reason why we're waiting until late spring 2022 to open the full course is because of the grass and the greens. Since there aren't greens on the range, I think that the range would be able to be open quicker. Or might not be able to close as early as well.
I know it's, it may be affect the construction, but if there's any way possible, if we could look at doing that, because it would give the high school kids a place to go practice where they hit balls. And I mean, and it's also a source of revenue for the city while the golf course is shut down.
That's something we'll definitely consider and I'll work with Vaughn on.
Did it backs up to the golf course there? Is there any way that, for safety reasons, for the golf balls flying and things of that nature? Is it, are they right on the golf course? Is that gated off already?
Is this, would this be on the southeast, southeast of the golf course? And the question is, is there anything we're doing about errant golf balls going over there? So that real, that community only comes into play on one of the 18 holes.
Okay.
Kind of what we're doing is, instead of running the hole parallel with the boundary of that property, we're shifting the line of play away from them. So we're moving a tee closer to the fence and moving where they're aiming further away from the fence.
Okay.
That's not to say that there still might be errant golf balls to go over there, but we're doing our best to minimize that. We're, I'm excited too. I congratulate council on.
I think this looks amazing.
Great.
I mean, and I have a daughter who plays and has really enjoyed getting to learn to play. And the only thing that I would say too is, if we ever get the chance to do the clubhouse renovation, I participate with an insurance law section that they do regular continuing legal education seminars at a golf course. So they do a meeting, lunch, and then they play golf. And so you can pay to go to the meeting and lunch, or you can play to play golf also. And it's a great opportunity. We do it all over the state. It'd be really great to get to do it in Midwest City. So if we get to that part, like conceptualizing to have meeting space in the clubhouse would be fantastic.
Absolutely, I agree. The more non-golf programming you can bring to John Conrad will hopefully increase golf participation.
Well, I would like to say this, that I don't play golf, but to know that you have a practice, I may get a chance to step out and try to practice.
Exactly.
And I think it's good. You have a practice and you have a beginning. So I'm looking at, it should bring a lot of revenue in and a lot of new players into this new design golf course. I know I've talked, I've heard this golf course so much talk and re-removalation on it. I never thought it'd be something like this, so.
Well, good.
It looks nice. I like the design. Yeah.
Thank you.
No, no actions needed.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, I like that.
No action needed on that. We'll go into discussion item number three, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion, consideration of approving a resolution of the council of the city of Midwest City's approval of the June 28, 2018 weighted voting amendment to the agreement creating the 911 Association of Central Oklahoma Governments.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, I'm going to try to walk through this. There's been a lot of discussion on this for a number of reasons, but there's actually two separate issues that I want to separate out. Let's talk about the weighted voting. Back when ACOG 911 was established, the fee structure was based on the number of landlines that were in a particular community. And that began in 1987. As we progressed in the years, obviously, landlines are increasing. People don't have them anymore. So it made sense for ACOG to shift their weighted voting based on population rather than the number of landlines within a community. So in 2018, the board voted on and approved the new weighted voting system, which encompasses population and not the number of landlines within a community. The reason it's, it was brought about way back when 911s, or ACOG 911 was brought about, it gives, it does, it gives smaller communities a voice, and it also gives the larger communities a voice as well. It plays out in the number of votes you get. So that, and in 2018, when we passed this, this should have come back to each individual community to be voted on and approved by each individual council. I don't know why it didn't, but it was an oversight. There was a transition during that period of the new executive director, the executive director prior to that had resigned and subsequently died. And we got a new director in, and he was, as he was going through all of the minutia and paperwork of learning what Oklahoma ACOG, Oklahoma City ACOG was all about, he discovered this error. The error, and it had already been sent to the attorney general's office and was signed off on. He discovered the error and then sent the resolution back out to the communities for approval as it should have happened before. He was just trying to correct that error. So that's what we're voting on right now. Now, the second half of this is when we hired, and when I say hired, I was the, I was the chairman of the board of ACOG at the time. When we hired the new executive director, Mark Sweeney, we gave him several tasks. And one of the tasks was that, basically, there's no bylaws that govern ACOG. It's just, I mean, it's outlined in state statute, some of the stuff that they can do as a governing body, but there was no bylaws. There were bylaws for the other two entities of ACOG, which is the Board of Directors and ITPC, which is the transportation piece, but none for the rest of it. So he was given the task of coming up with bylaws to govern how we operate at ACOG. That was one of several tasks that he was given, and they are in the process of doing that right now. The committee has been established. They're reviewing other bylaws from other COGS. The other nation, our competing COG, if you will, is INCOG from Tulsa. And they've taken those, and they're looking at those, and they're going to adopt and tweak our bylaws to fit our community and the communities that we serve. Myself and Councilman Burns have been in extensive discussions on this. Although there's no statutory requirement, I promise that before these bylaws are voted on and approved by the board director of ACOG, I'll bring them to you for review to ensure that there's no issues with number one, funding, or number two, how money is distributed. As you know, three years ago now, I guess it was, we managed to get $10,000 pumped back into our emergency operations center that was just sitting there, not doing anything. And there's also a $19 million budget that will fund next-gen 911, which they are in the process of purchasing equipment and getting, getting that implemented throughout our 34th community service area. So again, there's two separate issues. One is just the resolution approving the weighted voting that was voted on in 2018. Is this just a matter of cleaning up some things that should have happened before? We're fortunate that we have Mr. Sweeney to catch some of this stuff. And in second, my promise, as long as I'm sitting on board, that these bylaws will come back before review.
So I'm not really questioning more of a state, but I don't trust ACOG as far as they can be thrown. That $10,000 was found, was found by us. ACOG tried to take it per month. We got the other cities to get that money back because it was a 911 vote that they did not participate in when we, our emergency director went to the state legislature. That $19 million, we were originally told, once everything was spent, they were going to distribute the money back to the state. When Pat and Tim and I had a meeting, Mark said, oh, that was never said to you guys. So I'm just saying that what they say and what they do are not the same thing. I'll leave it at that.
Mayor, the one, and I appreciate you explaining, and I'll share with the rest of the council what I shared. Matt and I've had several discussions, and I wanted to make sure that you understand, this was nothing personal against you.
No, I don't take it that way.
Because the thing that concerns me is the seven of us are on this horseshoe right here. We're not going to be here in four or eight years. It'll be a completely different group of people. And they're not going to have the history that we have on, like, the money that was reimbursed to the cities. And the only reason that I ever even brought it up is that, since you're on the board, I felt like this is a good opportunity for us. You're our voice. I think, I just can't imagine other municipalities not wanting to see the bylaws of an organization that they're providing funding to, that they're responsible to the taxpayers for. So that's why I think it's really important that, that we, especially, and maybe not the seven of us or the other six of us, but I think it's important that Tim and his staff have access to those bylaws because if there's something in there that's going to impact us financially or operationally, he needs to know it.
I agree.
Because he needs to be saying, whoa, whoa, this, we can't, have you all thought about this? Because, not saying anything bad about Mr. Sweeney, but just like Sean just made that comment, that we said, hey, you told us the money was going to come back to us, and he said, well, that statement was never made. There was a person in the room that was in that meeting when it happened that wouldn't speak up. So I just want to make sure that we as a group aren't setting Mr. Lyons and his staff up for failure or anybody in the future.
And first off, I don't, I've never ever taken it personal. It's a discussion. And I agree with you that the staff and the council need to know what the bylaw said. Now, as far as Mr. Sweeney goes, we had that discussion, and that discussion was, that discussion did take place. And whatever, whatever, whatever remaining of the 19 million is going to be distributed throughout the, throughout the cities.
He told the three of us that it.
We had a meeting with him. He was very adamant about the fact they could do whatever they wanted to with it. Am I, am I misspeaking? He was very, very adamant about it.
Again, under the original agreement, under the original agreement in 1987, they're given a lot of latitude in how they operate. It's not 1987 anymore, Sean. And, and, but the.
Again, I'm saying the same thing Pat did. This is nothing against you.
I, I get that.
This is, for four-plus years, ACOG has not shown up, not been there, misrepresented, told us one thing, and then flat-out threatened us with the money if they didn't like what we were doing, if we didn't like what they were doing. You know, when we walked out of that meeting, there were three very unhappy people. And I'm sure you talked to all three of us, and you're more diplomatic than I am. But I walked out of there.
And I also, and I also had that discussion with Mr. Sweeney, and it was corrected.
Well, I would like to hear it from him. Because I don't trust him. What you're asking for us now is to go ahead and pass, approve this.
Approve the resolution on the weighted voting. It's already in place and.
But that you're, and what, what you told me prior that you were going to make in an agenda item?
Yes.
So if you'll just make an agenda item.
Our next, our next meeting will be about 26, 26th of September.
22nd.
22nd.
So can you invite Mr.?
Not this meeting, ACOG. And I will, I will email Sweeney tomorrow and have an agenda item on it for discussion.
And I don't think that's, and I don't, I hope he doesn't think it is, because if he thinks it's unreasonable, then I think we'll have a problem. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's, should be unreasonable for him.
Mr. Sweeney has been in the government COG business for 30-plus years, and he doesn't, he gets it. He truly gets it. And, and, well, he does understand the significance of our participation, and it will be corrected. And I will get those bylaws before either the council or Mr. Lyons, whatever the. Well, obviously, the city attorney. So.
Could you ask Mr. Sweeney to come back and tell us personally that that's not what he meant when he said that with the three of us?
I will, I will have that discussion, Sean. Okay? So again, the one thing that we are voting on tonight is to the approval of the weighted voting amendment and resolution for ACOG 911.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstention? Motion carries. Now, I will caution every one of you on this. Prior, and I'm not patting myself on the back, but prior to me taking office and taking that seat at ACOG, our representation was poor. And Pat and I had this discussion before that things getting passed, it was like we didn't have a say or we weren't connected. I have missed two meetings of ACOG in four years, and I served the chairman of the board on, for two years. I've been knee-deep in this thing. I helped lead, get, and my caution is that whoever sits on this horseshoe, Mr. Lyons, they need to be connected. And they need, if we're going to.
I concur.
If we're going to participate in this. And, 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 and again, they're a funnel-through agency, which we get a ton of money through for our street improvements. Everything that's going on 29th Street was a funnel-through, through ACOG and the ODOT. So I just, whoever takes this seat needs to be 100% dedicated and motivated to be in their business.
Well, ACOG, ACOG is a good organization. I dealt with them for probably 10 or 12 years prior to retiring from the police department in Oklahoma City. And in fact, I had, it was when you asked the existence. And in fact, uh, I had, uh, it was when UASI existed. And we, I was in charge of the law enforcement intelligence group part of it. And a lot of that was money that we got funneled back into Midwest City. There was some UASI money that we.
A lot of money came back.
Because of that. So, I, I'm, so I don't have an issue with UASI. I just, I just want to make sure that the seven of us, when somebody goes back and looks at that money, they could say, that we can honestly say, we knew what was going on, and we didn't, we were stewards of their money. Because that's actually the taxpayers' money, it's not ours.
That's absolutely right. Seventy-five cents to every cell phone.
I think Mr. Sweeney had a much clearer understanding of a city's perspective when we got done. I mean, yeah, that was a rough meeting. There's no question about it.
Well, that one girl, basically, she could, that one lady that was there could have straightened it out, and she just sat there mute.
Ms. Cook, her CPA.
But at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
During the last proof of honor, we couldn't get a hold of her because she was at her house in Hawaii.
Okay, well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your. Action on that. We'll move into discussion item number four. Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of forming a race relations committee to study and make recommendations on promoting diversity and advancing inclusion throughout our community and appointing Councilmember Espinoza Bowen as committee chair. This is a agenda item that came about as a result of a meeting that, that the mayor, myself, and Councilman Reed had with the Black Lives Matter group here in Midwest City.
They weren't really the Black Lives Matter. They were, they, they.
They were just a community group, weren't they?
They were just a community group made up of African-Americans.
Community.
They were not involved with, attached to, I, I mean, they might have some membership in, in with, but that wasn't what this was. It was a group of African-Americans in the community that asked to sit down to help improve race relations within our community.
And I would ask, uh, Councilmember Bowen that you recuse yourself from the vote.
No, you don't have to leave.
You can stay here.
Well, don't, in, uh, after.
She didn't leave though. She, she just.
No, after the, after the meeting, uh, Councilman Reed and I had a discussion. And, uh, we, you'd have to be buried in the sand not to realize that with stuff going around across the country that, uh, we needed to be on the forefront of stuff versus on the backside of it. So, uh, I had a little bit more time on my hands, so I tried to find an example of something that we could utilize to help form it. I got with Sean. We talked about it. We took it to Tim. Tim looked at it, reviewed it, took it to the mayor, and as a result of that, we, uh, came up with what we thought was a good deal. And Tim, after I turned it over to you, you did, what you did is you.
Yes, so we, we took a look at some other communities and, and, uh, looking at some of their committees, and we really liked the way that Lawton, the city of Lawton, um, put a committee, uh, a committee together recently, sat down and, and, uh, kind of went through the makeup of, of how, how they went through the process of an application process for members to, community members to apply and represent African-Americans, Asians, Hispanic Latinos, American Indian, Pacific Islanders, and then an open position that the board can choose, um, to fill as well. And, uh, and went through that process of identifying, I mean, giving them s- some core mission to work on, which is basically, as I stated in the memo, to identify racial barriers, promote racial unity, develop opportunities for racial equity, and implement solutions for change. And I had some communication with Councilwoman Bowen about, um, her thoughts on, on, uh, the makeup as well, and.
Can I?
You'd like to.
Can I just like, so I'd like to flesh out what happened in the meeting a little bit. The one thing that we were asked to do by Stephen Cooper, the gentleman who put this together, was to start a committee that was just comprised of African-Americans. And Matt and I said, I don't see a problem with it. Let's look into it. I'm not blaming Heather Poole. Heather Poole is, is, this is not, I'm blaming it all. She came back and said, if what we do for one, we must do for all, which means we might have fifty committees based on race, religion, gender, national identity, and everything else. And we don't have the manpower or the budget. And, and I know people would be thinking, well, how expensive can it be? Our city attorney looks through every single, single agenda. And if you go from one race relation committee to twenty or thirty, we have to hire another attorney, which we don't have that in the budget, plus where are you going to put thirty more meetings in a month? I think the long-term goal to get to what they had asked for is a great goal. And one of the things that Pat and I, when we sat down with Mr. Cooper, said was, I, what you asked for is great, but sometimes what we can do is what we have to settle on. And while I know there are some folks that have spoken to me in the African-American community that would like to see this just an African-American committee, I think making this step is a huge step forward for us. Now, I, go ahead, I, I just want to fill in the whole backstory about what was asked and how we got to the Lawton Race Relation Committee.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
So, I'm curious just about the name of this committee because it strikes me as kind of arcane language, and it strikes me that we're still, we're talking about race. You know, um, diversity and inclusion seems to be a much more common parlance. And.
Race relations.
But again, I mean, I, I, to me, it just seems like it's more of an arcane term, and we're still focusing on the issue of race. We're not focusing on, like, what are we doing to be, to appreciate our diversity and to make sure that all voices are included.
How about if we called it Diversity Relations Committee?
That's, my ask is, like, to consider calling it, like, a Diversity and Inclusion Committee or something. And I'll, I mean, I'll heed the floor to people who, you know, have stronger viewpoints than I do, but I just think, I, I just, I just don't really appreciate the idea that we're still differentiating based on race. That's just my comment.
I agree.
I don't have an issue with that either. And, and ladies and gentlemen, uh, we've got, actually, uh, we have one of the most diverse communities in the state.
Absolutely.
Uh, I mean, Lawton, uh, mirrors us pretty well. Um, and, and, uh, having these discuss, and, and I'll tell you that after being in the police department for thirty-one years, establishing those relationships and, 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 uh, that, that just, uh, that sends a lot, it sends, it says a lot for our community in how well we are, uh, we're, how we're willing to, uh, to, uh, continue those relations. So, uh, I think it's a great idea, and, and if there's any further discussion.
I think Doug Espie had an opportunity to talk what she's come up with.
Oh, sure, Espie, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I agree with you. We talked about that, uh, in a meeting that Tim and I had about the name, uh, whether it should be Race Relations, what else, so we can make a name later. So this is something we put out there for the application process to see if we can get other people involved in it. The mission, vision, and purpose and process for this committee is going to be one where we look at everything. Um, not exclude anyone in the community, you know? And that's where my thoughts came in because I gave some information to, to the, to Tim and to, um, Troy, who is also, uh, as one of the liaisons on the committee, to include, you know, look at promoting social equity, race equity, all of that across the board. A lot of diversity, because we, as a city, we are great, but we don't see, um, different diversities up in upper management levels within the city and mostly inclusion. And we're looking at those. I have had the opportunity to work a lot in the community. I worked through the Citizens Advisory Board for nineteen years for Midwest City. I've worked out of the community for years, even before I moved to Midwest City, and I've been here thirty-seven years. So that tells you that, um, I've seen racism. I still see it today. But I think that we can work together to bring racism, not to bring it to our city, but to, uh, stamp it out of, away from our city, to keep it away from our city because of what we're doing now. We're, we're taking action. And that action will go forward with a lot of things that we can do and we can promote in our city, uh, with inclusion.
Well, I think what you said about inclusion is something that, um, I have been advocating since two thousand and fourteen here in Midwest City, as being our city, as being city councilwoman here. And, uh, before that, I, I traveled with that Senator, like Senator Connie Johnson, a lot of the representatives. We travel across Oklahoma, uh, with the affirmative action program, uh, group that we have, we had. And it was quite enlightening because we believe in diversity and we believe in, uh, unity. So, uh, really, uh, I really thank, you know, the peers and all of you all for considering forming a particular, um, I guess it would be a subcommittee on how we can create, uh, inclusiveness, uh, within Midwest City, which is something I have been working on with a lot of leaders here. Uh, in two thousand and fourteen, I came on board. I worked with the police. I was an indifferent, uh, of course, uh, you, Mayor, you wasn't here then. But, uh, actually, we had worked in, uh, having with the police with, for his, having training with profiling and still, all of it. And I would tell you, after that training, when they came down from the Department of Justice and done the training with Midwest City Police, I would say less than a month, that's when the Ferguson broke out. Midwest City was ready. They was already prepared because they had already been through the training. And, you know, it's not so much a training, it's just enlightened, because sometime you can't see on the other side because you're not there. So, with that, I, I worked in, uh, in that particular aspect in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. And then I noticed there was just, it was a lot of exclusiveness going on here, uh, with something, especially in World Five and just among a lot of other things here going on. And, you know, Midwest City is a, is a very good city, but sometime you can't see what's going on if you're not on the other side. Well, we had a discussion, and we worked on a lot of things, uh, with Mr. Guy Hansen as being the, uh, mayor, I'm excusing being the city manager, and I discussed a lot of this with him. We had a lot of conversations, and we had, uh, we started working in the communities, which, those communities, if you know anything about these particular ones that were, if, it was Telstar. It had a very derogatory name, as well as another community. Now is one of the best, is considered a great community, and it's healthy. Because we had, uh, I had some other people helping me out, some, uh, leaders, pastors, even the police department. We all got together. We, we went out and we didn't just talk to people. We went out and met people. Most people had never touched or talked to a police chief before. That's interacting. That is inclusiveness. You can talk to talk, but you have to get out there and walk, and you have to be there among the people. I, I work in that capacity, and I think it's a, a grown and great change in Midwest City. Um, as you know, right now, and I've always, when we have things going on, events, I always talk about inclusiveness, and that is so important because that, that is what makes a city healthy.
Yes, ma'am.
And diversity. And I like to say that, don't, uh, I don't want you to think this is just African-Americans. When we stepped out, and I believe you was among, uh, some of those, uh, events, we had a diverse crowd.
We did.
Everybody was involved. And so, when we, when you all started, uh, I mean, you all, uh, I guess you all was collaborating about this particular committee, it was really, uh, very odd that, and in the midst with, uh, also, uh, Tim, you speaking on issues about, um, diversity, inclusiveness. I, I never heard anyone mention anything to me. Um, mostly, I'm just really conveying it and being voiceful. And I've always been that way, and I will, you know, continue to be that way regardless. But it was rather, um, unusual for me being in, since two thousand and fourteen, working on these projects, and to not be included in the process as, she may be a good person because she has been doing this for quite a while. This is nothing that I had started doing as a city councilwoman. I was doing, I, I'd done this particular work with, uh, affirmative action and inclusiveness and diversity. That's just been part of my life, working with into political realms and groups that I work with. So, when I got to, uh, came here, I noticed to implement some of those here into Midwest City in two thousand and fourteen and up to now, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, which I saw there was a great need for that. And it, it, it worked. Of course, excuse me, it's not in my ward anymore, but it's still thriving, and that was something I spearheaded. And I have spearheaded so much, and for me not to be included in the process was very unusual, to not even be considered for anything, uh, being a part of a board in such manner. But regardless how you all may pursue with this, I will continue to work with leaders that I've been working with and continue to do the work that I do. Um, but when we start talking about inclusiveness, we need to start right here within our city council with inclusiveness of projects and people that has been working in that realm already and have made, and has made progress. You shouldn't, when we talk about inclusiveness, it starts where we at right here. And I don't feel that was among that inclusiveness.
Christine, that, obviously, uh.
I did email you the stuff.
Yes, you did.
And I had kept you in, in the loop.
Yes, you have.
And Christine.
We'll discuss that.
Obviously, that, nobody's intent. And, and, and just because SV is going to be the chairperson doesn't mean that you're not going to have input and, and not going to be included. That's not, this is just a formality.
She can show up to your meeting, Mr. Bowen.
And, and you and I have talked about a lot of stuff over the last four years and, uh, improving, uh, the Northeast Tenth Corridor and, 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 and trying, what we can do to improve the, the African-American businesses along that corridor and, and beefing it up. And, and that's still an issue that we still need to address. So, this is not excluding you out of anything.
Well, I was, I was not inviting the process and not even, not even spoke.
Another, another program to, uh.
Approach me about such.
Well.
Uh, and I, I think it's, you know, uh, and you know, you're entitled to do whatever you may.
And I, and I, and I'm sorry that. And, and I'm sorry that, uh, you feel that way, and, uh, that won't happen again.
Well, and you know, and the problem is that, uh, you know, what, what, what you do now, it's not that it needs to happen again because it already been, it's already been done.
Well, and plus two, there's now, and, and you were, you were knee-deep, uh, involved with the Martin Luther King Breakfast.
Well, let me, thank you.
And that's, that's another issue that, you know, that kind of drove our decision, and, uh.
Well, I, I would like to clarify something on Martin Luther King prayer breakfast. Martin Luther, Martin Luther King prayer breakfast is a community, um, it, it is comprised of a community. It's not comprised of a subcommittee here with Midwest City. It is a committee that comprised of, you know, the metro force of the cities.
But, let me, let me correct you. It's, it's not a metro program.
Well, it's not a metro.
It was funded right here in Midwest City, Oklahoma.
It comprised of.
Okay.
A lot of people from the metro cities.
From outside the Midwest City.
Right, outside of Midwest Cities. It's just not Midwest City. This particular prayer, uh, Midwest City prayer breakfast, it is a particular committee where anyone, any one of us could sit on that committee. I have been sitting on that committee for about six years.
Yes, ma'am.
I have not, was not chairperson. I was just involved in the process, and I labored. It came to a point where they had to have a chairperson, and I stepped up to the cause. But that should not have any decision that's rendering a subcommittee with Midwest City.
That was part of the consideration.
Excuse me, for its Midwest City subcommittees. Now, I, I do have some other issues I will be discussing. We can discuss that later.
Okay.
But I, I can, I say this. What I do with M I K should not have a, an effect on what is being decided with a subcommittee dealing with some, with issues that we have been discussing, I have, and I bring up constantly.
As a councilwoman, you know, you are charged with bringing those issues to us.
And I have, and I, I constantly, this inclusiveness is one of the ones.
This is just, this is just a subset of all that.
Well, yes, it's a subcommittee. So, I want you to understand, M I K is not a subcommittee.
Okay.
And I assume this would be a subcommittee. And I, and I would like to be more involved with some of the subcommittees because I can see there's a liking in some that I'm involved with, and I like to be included in that. I would like some inclusiveness within the council and the subcommittees.
We got it. We got it. With that being said, is there any further discussion?
Did, did you have anything more to say, Espie?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh, Chair, Mayor, entertain a motion to approve.
Well, wait, wait, Mayor, wait. Let me, let me just say one more thing. Again, I've been in Midwest City for the, over thirty-seven years. I've worked in the community the whole time I was here and before I came. In college, in two thousand and nine, I actually was a volunteer at the police department. And I worked with the, with the police chief and all of them, even in the community policing department, when it was in, uh, Heritage Park Mall. So, I've been around, around the way for a long time, working in the community, not only in Midwest City and Oklahoma City, too. Because I actually went out there and did that for Hefner Police Department, the police department downtown. So, I've been all-inclusive of bringing things to Midwest City that I have talked about and I have worked on for a long time. So, I'm not green. I'm not green. I have, I have a willing to do something, and when I set my mind to do something, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it in the way that I feel that it's best for this community. And that's all-inclusive.
Mayor, point of order.
And what is, what-
Point of order. I'd like to make a motion to approve-
Well, I would like to say this. Uh, sir, we are still having a discussion.
Call for point of order.
This is a discussion.
Let's, I call point of order. Let's move on.
But this is a discussion.
I make a motion that will prove it as written with Espino A. Bowen as the chairperson.
I say you out of order, because if this discussion, we can discuss a situation.
Someone's got a roll in point of order.
Mister, Mister Byrne made a point of order. Christine, I've already ceased discussion.
I'd like a point of order to reprove with the-
I've got a motion. You'll have a second.
Second.
I'd like a roll call.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
I'd like a roll call.
Okay. Roll call vote, Miss City Clerk.
Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
And I would like to say no, because of the way this was handled, it's out of order.
Okay.
Ward six.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business and public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call it ordered Midwest City Authority, uh, municipal authority agenda. We do have a consent agenda, and these items are placed on the consent agenda's trustees. By unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or members of the audience which discussed an item, it will be heard or removed and heard in regular order. The Chair to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We now move into the new business public discussion of this agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call it ordered Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items, again, are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item posed does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or members of the audience which discussed an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.